All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a panel here today of professionals that are working with us to recover from Hurricane Irma. I'd like to ask everyone to please shut your cell phones off and put them on vibrate before we start. I'll hand this over to Todd shortly. He will introduce the panel. We ask that we allow the panel to speak, and then at the end of everybody's presentation, we'll open it up for questions and answers, just so we can have some sort of... Todd?
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me now? Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your day to come in here and listen to what these professionals have to tell us about our recovery process. They're all very talented individuals. I'm not going to take up a lot of time, but let's go ahead and jump into the questions. I think many of you have met Brian Cross, the gentleman over here to my left, who's the legal counsel for the Glades. This gentleman over here, Brian, raise your arm, please. This is Brian Cross. This is Art Showwell here. He's the engineer with Karen's Engineering, who's wanted to be working with us on scope of work and corrections and so on and so forth. Bobby Sims with Keys Claims. He's been working with our insurance adjuster to go through and inspect the units and work with our insurance adjuster to get the claims correct. Amy Westell, she works with Envirostruck, is our, in your title, is project coordinator. She's been doing a lot of number crunching and working on the computer with the county. Marty McLean, he's Envirostruck's project manager. He's the gentleman that's in charge of the overall recovery process. Next to him is the principal and president of Envirostruck, Neil Simon. And this gentleman over here on the left...
United Mechanicals.
He was with United Mechanical. And we also had Mark Stallman. Mark Stallman, his company are the gentlemen that have been storing our irrigation in the residential areas and also did the installation on the irrigation on the golf course. So the rules and engagement here are, ladies and gentlemen, these gentlemen are going to basically give you a presentation. This is probably going to take a little bit of time. There's a lot of information to go out and push out to everyone, so feel free to make notes. If you have a question, we will ask you to hold those questions until later on. Once the presentations are complete, we will open up the floor for questions and answers. Is everybody clear on that? Okay, without any further ado, Brian Cross is going to kind of give you an overview of where we are so far.
Thank you, everyone. I know a lot of you in this room. I've spoken to a large portion. I think this is probably the largest crowd, so I'll try and cover a bit of what I covered at your last town hall meeting. As you know, my law firm represents the Glades and have for years. We were the firm that represented you guys. We're another firm during the Hurricane Wilma claim with Keys Claims, and we're the ones that followed it through to get the multimillion dollars that we got at the end of Wilma after a lot of trying and fighting. Where we are now, and I'm going to defer some of the stuff to Marty, who's executive project manager. He's a general contractor who is going to be running the entire project and during the rebuilds, and he's going to go through what has been done by their company. And I can just tell you, because I have a lot of associations that have a lot of damage, and this one is moving very fast. I know it doesn't seem that way. I know people are upset. I understand how angry people are. But there are a multitude of legal issues that are involved with not being able to simply just throw roofs back on. That I'm going to let Marty cover with some of the FEMA issues, the 50% rule, and the permitting issues. I want to go over, based on what I talked about at my last meeting with you guys, a couple of good things have happened. Number one, we've gotten the contract done with Velocity. We're working out numbers that they will be paid, what is approved by the insurance company, and only what is approved and paid by the insurance company. Nothing out of what they will be paid has to come out of the Glades pocket. That's the contract that we got them to agree to in the middle of their job, or we were going to throw them off the job. They agreed to that. They had a $4.7 or $4.8 million bill. We've worked down to a number around 2, 2.1, subject to them documenting it, approving it, getting it covered by, and approved by the insurance companies. Now, something to remember, whether Velocity's paid $1 million, $2 million, or $60 million, that has zero to do with how much you guys are going to be paid to have this place rebuilt and repaired. What's paid for EMS and emergency services is a separate pot of money, and it does not eat into your claim or cost your insurance dollars. There are two separate pots of money in the policy, so it doesn't impact. Now, quick overview of the 718, because I know there's a lot of new phases in here that haven't heard any speak. When you have a casualty event, your declarations go out the window. Your declarations may say the windows are the unit owners, or this isn't the unit owners. The law of 718-111, after all the problems with Charlie and then Jeb Bush amended the statute, so we didn't have all this infighting between insurance companies saying, "No, you pay, no, you pay," between unit owner and condominium, said that, look, every insurance policy that's written after, I think it was '05 or '08, that's written, has to insure the following. That's condominium association insurance policies, the one that we're going after. It has to insure everything that was built and constructed by the original developer when he built this place. It has to insure and cover your windows and sliders. It has to ensure and cover your roofs, your HVAC system, your drywall, your plumbing, your electrical. Anything and everything other than a small list of items in 718-111 is what's covered and will be paid for and is being repaired and handled by the association's insurance company with their contractors. The statute is very specific as to that. It says that the association has to make those repairs, and that unit owners are not authorized to make those repairs. And that is because all of you own all of each other's insured common elements. So to facilitate that and to expedite it, that's what has been done. Now, unlike after Wilma, where we weren't brought in for several years until the claim was already quote-unquote "paid" with $900,000, that we then later got up to $9 million to actually get it paid, we've been successful in going through almost every single unit out here, being on every single roof, working with Keys Claims, who, didn't see where he snuck off to, Bobby.
Right in front of you.
Right here, this guy. That's probably right in front of my eyes. Working with him to develop scopes to address right off the bat with the Vera Claims Insurance Adjuster, Frank Short, who was hired and brought in by your insurance company to help adjust this claim, to document the severity of it, and not allow them to just do what was done after Rumble, where they walked in and say, "Oh, yeah, we can patch those singles. That's fine. Yeah, just take that up. No big deal. Here's your couple hundred grand." You have a $4.5 million deductible, and it's by building, by section. It's got to all be sequentially tracked and done, so we don't have a fine number, because not every building was hurt, and not everybody building will meet the deductible. That being said, we have already gotten the insurance company to pay the claim over $9.5 million. That's where the $4 million payment that already came in, that was approved, that came to you guys. I say that because it's pretty amazing that that was done, because to this day, I do not have a single piece of paper from your insurance company telling me why they mailed me $4 million. They have not explained what they're paying for, what they're approving. We have some rough numbers that they think that they have, but they paid that before they even went and installed the interior units. That number is going to go up. We are balancing those numbers and the figures with the way it has to be allocated by 718 and your declaration to replenish sections. One of the main things that we're trying to do here is to balance, get the money that we can from insurance companies, evaluate all the damages, bring in contractors to get paid top dollar through public adjusting, to try and get some bulk purchasing power that benefits you guys versus the insurance company, and try and minimize the amount of money that has to be paid towards what you guys, if anything, will have to contribute towards this. One example of that happening is if you have a section that has 20 roofs that got to get replaced, and you have this much money for roof reserves, you can use those roof reserves to replace and pay towards your deductible, because you don't need to have that big roof reserve for those, because you're going to have brand-new roofs for 20 years. You can start over. That is what we are trying to balance as we go through this process. It is an arduous, difficult process. I have claims that are bigger than this in other locations, but they're not spread across 700 acres, 1,162 units, and about 300 buildings. They weren't built in the time that yours was built, and so far, we have 16 to 18 types of building or building imprints. But what I learned when we put all new windows and sliders in this place, no two are alike out here. Everything is different. So as we tear stuff apart, get estimates. Now, there are a lot of people that are here, those seasonal residents, that don't understand some of the process by which we're going, and they think, "God, this lawyer just shows up and blabbles, and he's a good persuasive talker. That's why he's our elected fire commissioner, because he can talk great, but I don't believe anything he says." I don't control what Collier County requires for permitting, and nor does anybody in this. One of the issues that we've had, and I know there's been some rumblings about, you know, we should have just let Velocity rebuild this whole place. Well, number one, you legally couldn't have done that, because it's got to go to the competitive bidding, the bids that it did go to, to get some estimates, because Florida statutes require. Number two, there was a lot of people that are unhappy with Velocity with some of the stuff they've done. Now, in their defense, I have to say that in terms of massive remediation jobs, and Bobby can back me up on this, they did a very good job in terms of getting out the bad stuff. As we are going back through units and moisture mapping and working with insurance companies, fortunately for you guys, it's not delaying you under the aspect where I got a lot of other clients that got to go back and re-mediate almost every unit, because the people that they hired off the street walked in and just took a hacksaw and cut around and said, "Ah, I don't see any wet spots. No problem." And then when I walked in, I'm like, "Uh, there's a wet spot there. There's a stain here. What's this mold?" You cannot move forward. Well, typically, you cannot move forward. Mr. McLean with Envirostruck, who's very close with the county, as am I, has happened to work with them as a fire commissioner with the county commissioners and our building. Our fire inspections and plans review is now embedded in with the county, so our, even though we're a district, we work together. He has convinced the county to allow you, even though you haven't finished some of the demolition inspections, to begin to approve some of the roof permits over the coming weeks. They cannot allow you to simply just rip off and put a roof in until you close out a certain permit. It's for valuation issues and the FEMA issues, which I'm going to turn over to Mr. McLean to talk about in a second. But you have to, which Velocity did not do, there are a lot of permits that are down there that were not picked up, work that was not done, work that was done that didn't get inspected, and those permits didn't get closed out. I'm not going to digress into that, because it's a very complicated issue that I'm going to let him talk about. What I want everybody in this room to know, and again, all I can tell you is we went through this before as a team, with the exact same team, different contractor, because we're not just dealing with windows. We're dealing with full rebuilds in all these places. It is moving very fast in terms of a claim. You're the only people, I have a claim marker that's $25, $30 million, probably twice the size of this one. They've been given $500,000, and that's it. They haven't even gone out to, the association's insurance company hasn't even inspected the units yet. We've been in with Keys inspectors in every unit. We've gotten the insurance company, as you've seen in the past few weeks, through every single unit, moving them through. That's why they're paying. We're intend on handing them a full scope of repairs and estimates in the coming weeks, so we can continue to get the funds that you guys need, so you can continue to rebuild this place. The task of managing a project this size, when you understand what the FEMA 50% rule is, you will understand why it moves, not at a sales pace, but it moves not as quick as, you know, where I'm from, I would have called somebody and the permit, I'd have had it done, my roof was on. It cannot happen when you have such a systemic casualty loss. You guys faced more immediate damage this time than you did after Wilma, and that one, we got unsettled for you at 12 or 13 and change, when you had depreciation and deductibles. This one is much more widespread, because a lot of the Wilma damage was to your windows, and they looked okay, but they were damaged and compromised, and that's why the insurance company paid the millions of dollars. I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, because it's probably one of the most important facts out here that I want you guys all to realize and think about. Well, two parts. Number one, your board, your management, and your professionals are doing everything they can. Your board members, there's some infighting. Everybody's frustrated. We know how much we want to get this process pushed as fast as we can, and that's why they brought in professionals. They've got engineers. They got big contractors who can get multiple roofers in multiple sections, flying through, ripping roofs, repairing roofs, putting drywall in as quick as we can get through it. But we got to work together as a team, as a board, as management, and they are doing it. They're taking a lot of heat and a lot of things that they can't fix, because they're not Collier County permitting, or they can't fix because they don't have permits closed out. Everybody's doing the best they can. Now, the thing that I will mention, just as a prelude and a perfect time to get off to Mr. McLean, the 50% FEMA rule. The 30-second summary of it is, is that we have a lot of buildings out here that are below FEMA elevation, and you got to get elevation certificates, and you got to write scopes, and write what it's going to cost to fully repair and CO these places before the county's going to approve those numbers, which includes estimating what it's going to cost for you guys to rebuild your interior contents. FEMA has a rule that you go back five years, and any improvements to a building add in towards getting to that 50% number. If you hit that 50% threshold number, and they go off the appraised values, although the county has some lead weight to go up to 20% to give some room. And before I scare everybody, let me just tell you that the county out here, the commissioners and the first and second in charge, building officials, they love the Glades. They know how important of a podium block you guys are. They are doing everything they can to help us get through this without having to trigger a 50% rule. But that is what is taking time in compiling all this, because there's been a lot of money spent fixing these places with the windows, sliders, roofs, lanai extensions in the past five years. If you hit above that 50% rule technically, and it can be one unit owner that causes the trigger to go over, because he remodels. They look at a building and its title. FEMA requires you to tear down your entire building, rebuild your slab above flood elevation, and then rebuild it. We do not want to get into that scenario, and there are some buildings out here that it's going to be close. But we're playing extremely nice with the county, and they're playing great with us, because that's why they jumped in and said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa. Brian, we need to have a meeting. Marty, we all need to get on and figure out how we rebuild the Glades. We want it to get back to the way it is." I bring it up about the windows, because your boards, your management team got us involved, and with their help and what they did, and specifically, I'll be honest, I helped get a little chunk at the end as part of it. But the work that this guy did with the stacks and stacks of every single unit, every single photo, and proving with the best experts in the country at a multi-week appraisal arbitration, is what got the funds to get those windows and sliders. Had that not been accomplished, I can tell you that half or most of your buildings, or more so than half, would not be even close to having the FEMA discussion. This place would be being torn down. Those windows and sliders are what protected these buildings to limit what actually was extreme damage, but it would have been 10 times bigger than that, based on every engineer and professional that I've talked to. One of the things that's also taken some time in fighting the claim, the last thing I'm going to touch on, is your insurance company was American Coastal. Last year, American Coastal was purchased by UPC. UPC is not very happy. American Coastal wrote policies for 10 or 15, 10 years down here, and they never had to pay any claims, because we had no hurricanes. They buy American Coastal, who writes a lot of commercial down here, and they just inherited that. I've been dealing with American Coastal. Last week, I got an email from a high-level insurance defense attorney out of a big firm in Tampa. That's all they do, is try and squish claims and cut fees on people on large commercial claims. This has now hit UPC's desk. He stated to me that this is the largest claim that they have ongoing right now, that they're nervous and trying to figure out why the heck we got $4 million without even a fight, because they know that their leverage to get you guys to break is to pay you as far out as possible and let the malcontent and the fighting get to such a point that your board just says, "Just take whatever. We don't care. We'll borrow the money. We'll special assess. Just be done with it." That fight is going to continue between myself and that firm. They are going to. And thank goodness, we have Keys involved, and we have the records of my firm. They're going to go through every single photo on every single thing that was part of that appraisal after Wilma, and every single dollar that you got paid for any speck of damage, including a paint shift on a piece of the siding, and say, "Well, show me the receipt. Did you repair that? We paid you for it. Oh, no? Sorry." We have the benefit of using those funds for windows and sliders and making the roof repairs to be able to fight that. But they're looking, and no offense to insurance adjusters or agents in the building, I like them. They're like lawyers. They're difficult to work with. It's not a secret that they're not in the business of paying a big claim. They only paid you $900,000 last time, and then begrudgingly, although voluntarily, because they knew they could have faced more, then they mailed $9 million. So they're looking to say, "Oh, wow, we paid you this money. You didn't repair that roof. We're not covering it." "Oh, it looks like you're asking money for this roof. You didn't replace it, or we don't believe that it should be replaced, because we repaired it last time. Who'd you use to repair it? You need to go after him for warranty." They're going to be dissecting and carving into every aspect to try and fight this claim and cut out coverage. The good thing for you guys is they've already sent you a huge chunk of money, which is a large portion of your claim minus deductible, and they're already in it. You can't undo what's already been paid and done, even though I'm sure UPC and that lawyer is banging his head against the wall right now. We're going to continue to do this. The last thing I'll end with, I'm working with all the board members. We're having construction meetings weekly as a way to keep everyone informed. Unfortunately, as I've explained, the board is, we can't have every day an open board meeting and then expect you guys to feel that everyone needs to attend. These claims, these inspections, these amounts, these damages, the work that needs to be done, the stuff that needs to be carved, the stuff that needs to be removed, it changes every single day. There's a whole team working together. I'm trying to steer that ship, keep everybody with the idea of working together, and let's not lose as much part of the valuables of the claim by letting it fall off the side because of egos, agendas. "I want this done. I don't think it's that bad. My section can do this ourselves. We don't need you." The law controls that. I don't get to make those decisions. The legislature wrote the rules by which we have to play. And if people don't like it, they got to go deal with whoever's in the Florida House and Senate and try and change that. We're bound by Florida law. We're all working together. I personally, and I may offend some of these board members, because I like a lot of them, I really don't care individually they all like me. That's why I like to speak to you guys, because the ones that are being blasted with emails to their whole community by section directors about their opinion and what they think, your opinions are just as valuable as their opinions. They're the same, they pay the same dues you do. You all have the same say. The only thing I care about is getting this to the finish line, to recover as much of the money as we can, to rebuild your place to the best we can. And if I offend a director, or I'm that, I want you all to know that this, I meet with the management team, the officers and directors, the board president, vice president, treasurer, secretary are part of this, the construction meetings as we're going through every Friday. These permits, what did we find? What are we worried about? How quick can we do it? What are the bids? Where are we at on material ordering? They're a part of that. I've sent to all your board members my personal cellphone and my email address multiple, multiple times. I will meet with any one of them at any time to go through stuff, and I will stay here, although I won't force these other professionals to stay here. I'll stay here until the sun goes down, until midnight, and I will answer every one of your guys' questions. There's nothing that's being hidden. Nothing's being delayed. Nothing's being preferential. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McLean, because I've spoken enough. This is the project, executive project manager from Envirostruck. He can give you a little bit of his background and history and talk about some of the multi-multi-million dollar construction jobs that they've done. He's going to go through kind of a summary. We have some scheduling items, so you guys can start to hear what you care about, which is, when the heck is my place going to be done, so I don't have to see Brian Cross anymore? I'll turn it over to Mr. McLean. Thank you all.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, Brian and Todd told me there might be four, fifteen people here. Me, and I can see we probably get by our expectations for capacity. Basically, my name is Marty McLean, I'm executive project manager from Envirostruck. I need to introduce my two people. Many of you may have already met them. Dennis Carrier and Frank Masana, my project, one-site project superintendents. They're the ones going around trying to get these waivers signed, which are very important that we get them, whether you need any work or not. We were asked to step in and have a meeting here back in, about the end of November. And reason being is, I did this type of loss up north when it comes down to many of your premier tornadoes and hail damage and flood and fires. 25 years ago, I got my credentials in that. In 2004, I'd had kind of enough of it, and I came to Florida. So, you know, and I started my position to build a major building in June 2004. What happened two months later?
Charlie!
Okay, my next assignment was the next two and a half years at a little resort called South Seas Resort. Where I was one of two major players in that, spearheaded getting that project completed. This one has a very unique, very unique dynamic to it, because when the resort was hit, there was a lot of structure. And I want to go back to something Brian said. The windows indoors saved you at South Seas Resort. Because had there been something gotten in to your units, they would have been flooded, and then the problem here would have been totally different. Fortunately, in 2004, the finances were there because of, you know, hyperinflation and what have you. They weren't faced with the 50% rule. So prices were increasing. There was no problem. It had some concern, you know, and everything was there. All had a good place. Five years later, when the devaluation started hitting, you've heard the term mentioned up here, reset. There's a five-year reset, which many municipalities picked up as a direct reason for that storm, because a lot of them were 10 years, which simply means everything that was done to every structure has an assessed value, and it is accumulated over 10 years. And that's the way it used to be. Had a person after that storm had a catastrophic, and the state department hit, many of those structures would have been torn down. It's driven by what they call elevations, flood elevations, and this change is periodic. So now, I'll go back to what we were here for. We were called out. We made a visit here the end of November. Neil brought me out. Of course, it was during the headlights, and I had déjà vu. And I'm sitting here thinking, "Okay, here we go again." Now, the dynamic here is, people are living in these units. You know, this place is, is being lived in, where South Seas was now. So that changes the whole package. We were given a list of all of the buildings, the units, that Velocity had put together, and in their defense, we had H20911 go through about 40, 50 units out here, just to kind of give us all for an idea of mitigation. In their defense, they got a little overzealous in some of the units, but overall, they did a fairly decent job. But the problem that we ran into next was trying to determine the damages to, you know, the extent of the damages, figure out what Velocity had done, how much was involved in that. And again, looking at it from the viewpoint of what it is that I do, the Glades did exactly the right thing. They stopped. And the county contributed to that. Had this been left to move forward, the conversation in about three months, four months in here would have been totally different. And again, I'll get to the 50%. We won't go into more of the detail in after a few minutes. But it got stopped at the right time. And then people got pulled in, and again, Velocity is one of those companies that travels. I've done this, like I said, I live in Indiana. Texas must have a thing on living there. If you are a contractor, you must chase storms, because I have seen Texas all over the country, you know, on storms. So this is kind of what happened. And again, they did what they needed to do in a hurry. It really did help in regard to the amount of mold and damage there could have been. It would have increased. It would have gotten worse. Now, yes, time to regroup, back up. So again, the Glades, they retained us. We had conversations. We had several conversations. We went to contract. I think Neil and I were out here mid-November. We went to contract the end of November, and then the job was on, because we started really digging into this list of buildings. What's the damage? And then we started, you know, and one of the very first meetings that we had was based on 50% rule. Now, that put a whole new dynamic on what we needed to do. We need to determine the values of each of these buildings. That's done based on the value of the units. And by doing that, Amy, about two and a half, three weeks ago, started digging into the valuations. We have literally thousands of documents on every unit out here, every permit, virtually every permit holder, and putting us all on a graph to see where it stands value-wise. And the next step is getting into them now and determining the value of, you know, the elevations. Because in order for you to pull a roof permit, you're either an elevation certificate that proves to them that you are above flood, or the 50% remote policy applies, and that's what she's working on currently. This process typically takes about four months. We jumped in with our people, and it's been, there's been countless hours of this. In a little more than six weeks, we're a little bit more than about 60% having this information all laid out. We had, I had tasked my group to find the 40 worst out here that has interior to go with it. And we deemed it the top four. Keys has already put together a list. We kind of, this is trying to change back and forth. And we finally took it upon, you know, with their information, Todd's information, input from many of you, we went in and we put this all together, two units, three units, all units, and then the roofs themselves. And we created what we call a top 40. Those are what's on this schedule. It's a really defined timeline of everything that we have done to date and where we are going with this. When they told me there were only going to be 20 people here, I didn't make enough copies. Anyway, no, I will make sure that, you know, the board's got it, you know, to go over. Our schedule at this point, start date... Our schedule at this point, start date for the first batch of roofs over the home, will be February the 19th. That is our start date. This list has 40 units on it, we will add to that to try to do sections. We are have, we have at our disposal, three major roofing contracting teams. And we'll bring them in as we need them, as we can get releases. But in order for us to do anything out here, which was just executed this past week, and Amy's worked on the first part this week, is there are, were 128, I believe, permits applied for with Velocity. Not one ever got closed out. These permits were pulled at increments of $300 and $600 a unit. That red flags to the county that there was a problem within the demolition criteria here. Because you've got somebody out here that had done several demos, and the numbers were around two grand, which would be closer to being right. So the county's now making, understanding that they're being undervalued on the demolition. Now let me explain to you how that works. FEMA will be back involved with the county in about two years. They will audit the county. They have a demolition criteria and a reconstruction criteria. And those numbers better be, you know, basically line up based on what their formulas are. $300 is not going to win if you've got to go $15,000 and put drywall back there. And that's what they'll catch the building officials on. So the building official is tasked with basically making sure that everything stays in order, stays in line on the numbers. In the meeting that we met with them, Jonathan was hot to death on, there was a FEMA expert working for the county, and then it's Mike Levy, who is the, you know, his right-hand man, first words out of their mouth is they don't want to see anything go wrong out here, they want to see every building stand, and they'll do anything in their power to make sure it happens. So the board, then Brian, Todd, you know, that's when they tasked us to find out what all had been pulled out. And so we have copy of every permit and what the values were. So getting to the 50% rule, let me give it to, kind of in a simple term. If your building is worth $200,000 and it is below flood, in FEMA world, it is worth If there has been $50,000 spent over the past five years, that leaves $50,000 to fix everything that's in it now.
Including interior rebuilds.
Yeah, and that's the next step. Because we are now being responsible, are being asked, to what will it take to bring building units into a CO? Okay, which means certificate of occupancy. We do not have your individual contracts, you know, for, you know, whatever your carriers or whoever you retain. There was a letter that went out from the attorney here, we asked for it to go out. And it went to the county that basically puts a moratorium or a complete stop to issue which of any additional permits out here, no matter who it was. Because as he briefly touched on, one unit owner could jeopardize the building. And we will not get a CO unless every unit in that building is habitable. That means complete. So be very, very careful who you're hiring. Unlicensed contractors, people knocking on your doors, lots of litigation going out here. If they get caught, that is a red tack. That stop work is a real simple thing, it's called a can of worms. If work has been done and the county goes into that unit, like I said, Velocity put together a very good list of units, and that unit will be gone through. And they see that that thing's put back together and they're ahead of their permit, I will tell you, the county will make you quit and all that. So don't roll the dice because you're never hurt. And if there's a process, and we will help you through it every bit of the way. Like I said, we are totally devoted. I have right now the beginning or start a crew that's out there for this. Amy has been with me, Frank has been with me for over four years. So that helps out tremendously in the process, thought process, and what we're looking for and how to expedite. That's the reason why it's gotten done, what we've gotten done to date. And on top of that, I go home until midnight, one, two o'clock in the morning, and I put this in a computer to make sure these numbers work. Because I have to work all day long too. So I want to make sure that we do this right. I want to make sure that, you know, it's going to take some time, there's going to be some pain here. But I need for everybody to be aware that, you know, we are doing everything and we're pa, our power. Now with that, the content, this has been asked for numerous times. The content is an owner item. Your carrier should be the one taking care of anything that gets removed, how it gets removed, you know, anything that gets cleaned up, that is not a resort or association. I know that there are units out there that have one or two of the rooms that are messed up. When we go in to do the drywall, those areas will have to be cleared. We'll put up curtain walls wherever it is that we need to do. But please understand that the drywall isn't going in, hang the wall, put a coat of tape and mud, and we walk out. It's a three, four, five day process, depending upon, you know, how it's finished and how much there is. And those guys putting the stuff up can put it up quickly and they'll leave. That doesn't mean you're being abandoned. That simply means there's dry time. You know, we have to work in between this. Brian, yeah, like, it was one of those questions, I want to get back into valuables. I have a really good rule about this. You didn't even involve this so many years ago. Firearms, money, jewelry, collectibles, prescription drugs. Everything out of that unit, if you're going to allow entry by anybody other than yourselves. And it's for your own safety. Because I have a firm belief, if you get home and you find something's not there, in my world, it never was. And we trust everybody that works for us. We really do. But I've seen this happen many, many, many times. You know, I roll up to a house up north that's worth $50,000, and they're missing $60,000 for the Rolex watches. So, again, you know, everybody, you know, it's interesting how an insurance loss can be, you know, change the personality even of the nicest person. First day of training that I had toward this type of loss, is the instructor, first words out of his mouth. He goes, "I'm going to tell you something about insurance loss." He goes, "It will make a dishonest person out of the most honest person you ever met in your life." Yeah, so, and it stuck with me, you know, through my entire career. Anyway, like I said, I, we will be placing containers out here for the demolition. And again, it goes back to content. These are not community containers. They are basically, you know, they're, they have been allocated for the project. And if we go out and we find somebody's bedroom suit in a container that's got partial, you know, roofing in it, then we are going to bill the association for the, you know, additional lift, going taking it out. We asked everybody, and again, safety is the first and foremost, there will be a lot of movement out here. There'll be a lot of things happening. We need for everybody to be aware of what's going on around you. The people that we're retaining for this are, have safety directors, but just be aware of your environment. Again, we're tearing roofs off, so you know what happens when you tear a roof off? Yeah! So what we're doing, and again, neither contractor has much responsibility, we're forcing our contractors to magnet, to put down tarps, do everything that's part of their power. You know, basically, it's one of those situations that, you know, it's, it's, we don't want to see it happen, it's going to. And I've told my subcontractors, because none of them's here right now, that we're going to make letters that has their names, phone numbers, and contact things on, it's my foot, my trailer with a nail, we're going to hand it to them. And you can call my subcontractor about it. So they're more motivated to make sure this gets picked up. If you see something out there you deem that be unsafe, or something you've got a question about, my trailer's sitting right over here, don't be afraid in a second. Right now, I said, we've assigned two people for this, we did it on initial startup, and we're, we will bring people in as we need them as this project grows. But what we're trying to do is get you started. And we will work behind the scenes to increase that list, you know, that's on here. So, really, I mean, unless, Neil, you can think of anything? Amy, did I miss anything?
I don't think so, but I want to just chime in and follow up on a couple points that he made there. Their company has background checks on employees. The purpose of this schedule, which is a living, breathing document based on what they find, will be with management company. The contractor dictates, based on what the insurance company agrees has to be replaced, or what's the worst damage. They control the means, method, and sequencing. So there's going to be no, no director or section's going to be able to get this fixed or that fixed. They tell us what they can fix and how they can do it in the most cost-effective way that we don't have, because we'll get charged more if we say, "Stop here, jump over here, go fix this building." Now, in that collaborative effort, I am working with Todd and the entire administration, the contractor, to gather ideas and build into the factors of, look, if we come across two buildings, and this one has four full-time residents, and this one, there's nobody here right now, let's do this one first. Can we guarantee it's going to go perfect? No. I mean, I know that we have this tarp over here that's lasted past its 90-day duration, and we're going to have to temporary patch that. Todd said, "No matter what, do not fix any community building before you start fixing these people's roofs, or otherwise I'll get shot." So, we know very clearly. I can tell you that there will be notice. We will work through it. It's hard, you've got multiple teams. The last thing we wanted to face in the last few weeks, I know that there's been a few, Bobby's told me that 98% of the doors that were knocked on, Key's Claims was there, nobody went in from the insurance adjusters company or their team without a Key's Claims representative standing in there, watching them, making sure that they're doing it, and then when they left, they, they leave. We're trying to get as much information out as we can of notice, but that was a compressed thing that, we put a lot of pressure on the insurance company to say, "Look, I don't want one guy walking around and picking his nose and looking at the windows. I want multiple teams, and I want to get through these units, so you're going to tell me how much you're going to pay us if we can go to war for the rest of it. I don't want this to take like it did in Wilmun multiple months because so many times passed." And we're pretty much done, Bobby, I think, on almost all units.
We played our first round, we've got every unit inspected except for 122.
There's 122 that we didn't have keys, or some owners didn't want to let people in. To the extent that you didn't, you feel?
In three weeks.
In three weeks. Which took four months last time. To the extent that you're very irate, your board members, because, you know, somebody knocked on your door and you weren't there, or whatever, get mad at me. My website, my email address on the Florida bar, call me whatever you'd like, but I had to get this moving through because I know how upset you guys are that this stuff isn't done. And I wanted to get it done to then ship the bird back on the insurance company to say, "Okay, put up or shut up now." They're working with us very well, like I said. They've said what they've said, and that hasn't happened anywhere in my, in my community. As we go now through the rebid, the rebuild, what that was, we've already been in there with Key's. As we go through the rebuild process, there will be a scheduling coordinator working under the directive of Mr. Marty here. We will have this living, breathing, working schedule, just like we went through this together as a team, and we went in and ripped out all of your windows and sliders and put them back in. I know it was discomforting, I know it was annoying. We are making arrangements to minimize that, to give as much advance notice as possible so you know when it's coming, you know, when you'll get the notices like email and posted on your bulletin board, so you have an idea about where you are in the sequence. That will be transparent and shared as a living, breathing document. I'm going to work with administration to try and get it posted on your website so you guys can see. We will continue to have these meetings more frequent than we have had with open members. And for those of you who don't want to drive down, or fly down, or don't want to ruin your day, I will take a summary of this meeting, and I will then get it to Todd to blast out email and to mail to the owner so we can get some of this stuff moving along. But be aware, there's going to be no, nobody just showing up in your unit and start tearing stuff out. They're going to take precautions to make sure that you, that the contents that need to go out are out, that it's discined and taped. Drywall's a dusty, messy thing. I got to do it in my house. I mean, I live right down the street here on County Road. I got blue tarps on my place, I have holes in my roof that were leaking again the other day, I have holes in my drywall, I still haven't been able to get anybody to even fix it. And I know every roofy contractor in the country because they work in all my associations. But I'm one little guy in a house, they won't even talk to me, I can't even get a return call. Because of the size of the project and the professional network he has, we have people, we have material spec, we know what it's going to cost, where you have shingles, we're going to be able to buy in bulk, and we've already moved ahead versus saying, "Well, hold on, first we just have to figure out Velocity, first we got to figure out this." There is nothing slowing us down. There are funds available to start the repairs, things are being ordered, there's a line of credit available to get it going. And my job and my goal is, before that horrible assessment work comes out of my mouth or any of these board members' mouths, I keep telling them and they agree, "Brian, do what you do. Get us as far as we can down, get as much money as you can from the claim, let's continue to show the damages and the extent, you and Bobby get us everything you can. Let's then look at the loss assessment coverage protection that you guys have and your individual homeowner's policies to, so it won't, you'll get most of it covered by your, by your own homeowner's insurance. And let's get a look at how much of reserves that you have in your roofs already, because like I said, if you've got 10 roofs, you reserve $10. Insurance company's putting 10 new roofs on, that $10, you don't need to spend on your roof. So you can take that money and put it towards your deductible or other operating expenses for your section. All of that is being managed." Thirty-second spin on the loss assessment coverage, because I think I gave this last time, but it was about two-thirds of the capacity of this room, which I can't tell, we're probably above 243, but I won't tell my fire marshal that. Under your policy, every policy, for interior, for unit owner insurance, so the policy that you pay for your own contents, your paint, your drywall, your furniture, by statute, and you pay for this already, there's a loss assessment protection. It's in there, you probably have a ready. The minimum, and that's for special assessment insurance coverage, the minimum that has to by statute be in every single policy is $2,000. Some people bought more, some agents just gave you three or four or $5,000, and you have to look at your policy. That is to cover for special assessment protections. It has a separate deductible distinct from your hurricane deductible. Quick fact scenario. Let's say in the end, and again, I don't know the numbers yet because we're still rolling our sleeves up and fighting for this. Let's say that it's a $2,000 assessment, it's what we got to spend to deal with a catastrophic hurricane, a couple hundred thousand diesel spill, whoever knew that was buried out here and left full of diesel gas. And to deal with everything that we've dealt with through all the Irma damages. If there's assessment of $2,000, under your policy, you have a $2,000 coverage, the max deductible could be $250. So your insurance company is going to send you $1,750. All that you would pay out of your pocket is $250, and you would take that $2,000 and pay your special assessment. Those in here whose faces are going down because they didn't purchase interior insurance for their own units, I apologize, it's an unfortunate thing, but if you don't have car insurance, you get an accident, you got to pay for it sometimes if it isn't there. I'm doing everything I can. I think the board will tell you, I've talked to Todd at eight, nine, 10 at night on Saturdays and Sundays, I talked to Marty in the evening, so sometimes we get to sit down and not be working during the day. We're, we're working on everything we can. We understand how painful, specifically it is in here, with so many people on fixed income, with so many people in their retirement age and seasonal, that every penny of a special assessment kills. And we're trying to get this there as fast as we can and get everything covered to where, after it's all done, we get this place rebuilt, it looks beautiful, please encourage your directors to work as a team with us. Like I said, I don't care if they hate me, they can call me anything they want, as long as they just send it to me in an email, because that way it's attorney-client privilege and it doesn't get disclosed to the insurance company. And work with your, your, the Biostruck, he didn't talk to you about what their company does. They built, you guys at the Porsche dealership right over on Airport and Davis, that new beautiful Porsche building, they do the Mercedes dealership, they do 10, 20, 40, 50, 100 million dollar projects all around. They're one of the best GCs I know in this area, they're in that trailer, they have people here, they're locked into how they get compensated, and it doesn't go up whether you go in there and pester them 24/7. And if you do it, it'll, I'd rather you go there so that way I don't get in a bit. But, and, and, and understand, they're, what they're being paid is overhead profit, is what's allocated and being paid by the insurance company, because the insurance company has to pay for overhead profit. Because as much as this guy loves you, he's not going to come out here and do this for free. He's here to work. So with that, I believe?
I got one more comment.
One more comment, I don't think, Bobby, if you have anything to add, I'm going to cut it all, and then we'll do Q and A.
Okay, just one more thing, going back to the, again, the permits got brought up there a couple of times. I understand how the 12 sections that are out here, there's a communication or some type of informational board that's out in the sections. What we will be doing is this, again, the schedule itself is one thing that will be added to. It will be, like I said, it's a breathing document. And it'll be added to, you know, every, you know, probably weekly on what's coming up. That information in your sections will be telling you how you fall into sequence. You know, and that, and what it'll do is it'll let you know that we're getting close to, you know, approaching. This document right now does not have any interior, because I need to get kicked off in the first 10, 12, 14 buildings and move into those, and then they will be added to it. But we're gonna try to give you enough notice. Permits will be issued. So permits that get put in your unit, please do not remove. They get signed off of as they're inspected. The permits that are on the buildings are for the roofs. As things get concluded, then we will take them off. Keep in mind, again, they will not close out our permits until that building's sealed. In order for it to seal, everything has to be finished on the inside. So what we are responsible for on the interior of it is the drywall insulation, in-wall electrical, in-wall plumbing. Your carriers should be picking up the rest of it. The electrical seems to be the most elusive item because all they've left when they rip ceilings out are whips, others dropped in. So we'll take those on an individual basis. There are certain items that do not require a permit, you know, as much as painting, floor covering, things along those lines there. But we have a list of these, and what we'll do is basically, again, as we get down into the finishes, and I do not, really do not want your contractor in that unit until we finish, because all it's gonna do is muddy it, and that tells me they gotta permit they should have. Or they're in there without a permit, and then we'll go ahead and make a phone call. Because this project will go a whole lot smoother if we do it as a group, and you know what's going on in your unit, you communicate with us. And again, there are buildings here that require nothing. All we need to do is an inspection, if it's in agreement with the board. If you've got things that you're wanting to do, we will release those permits. You know, right now, the county's gotta hold on to everything. So if we're not impacted anyway in it, I can't see any reason to stop you from doing what you wanna do.
Correct.
So with that being said, I guess everybody else finished?
We've finished.
Okay. Since there are no questions?
I spent five hours taking questions on Friday and three and a half hours in Fort Myers taking questions today, and I'm guessing this'll go. I'm gonna try, and if it does get too long, I'm gonna try and shift. There's a couple other things in the town hall with the irrigation people. Do you know how long you guys are gonna be? Do you wanna go over it now, or do you want to?
Go ahead while it's...
I'm gonna go ahead and take some questions. I said, like I said, I'll stay here until whatever I do, and then we'll deal with the irrigation.
I've got the mic.
Is it on?
Hi. I don't know.
Get it.
John, I'm good.
Wow.
Brian, you went through the items that you would be taking care of. I noticed there was no mention of lanai cage.
Okay. Do you work for the insurance company?
Uh-uh, we lost our lanai cage, that's all I know.
The question was, my question was, when Brian crosswalked by everything, he didn't mention lanai cages. And I did that for a reason, but I'm going to mention it now. It's a conflicting issue under Florida statutes. There's two opinions. Mine is that they're covered, and that's the right opinion, and I'm gonna get it fought with, and we were successful, Bobby will tell you, in the last time we fought with American Coastal. Now again, that's not binding, there was no judgment by judge. We were successful in obtaining funds as part of that nine or whatever million was, getting money for screen enclosures, lanai coverage. Here's the summary in a nutshell. The main reason that that lawyer, other than to figure out why I have 4 billion, literally, I, my jaw was dropped when I opened a FedEx and there was a $4 million check, and there was no piece of paper saying what it was for. That's why he ran down here. One of the things he said he wanted to seek was, he wanted to look at lanai coverage. Bobby and I spent about an hour with him, and Bobby spent another hour with him. He walked around, and he's a very sophisticated first-party insurance defense lawyer, he's looking to exclude covers or anything he can. He was looking at every one of your lanai, where they connected, what is part of the slab, what's been extended, what was originally built. He's gonna run the county, and think he's gonna find all kind of stuff. Let me just tell you, we went through this when we dealt with the windows and slider. The county doesn't even have records about what was built out here for most of your buildings. 718-111 has a conflicting, or at least a quasi-ambiguity. I don't see it as that, but the insurance companies do, and it hasn't been adjudicated, and it may get resolved in this case. My goal is just to balance the risk with pushing as far as I need to within the court's order appraisal, and get to a good number that we think's the best, and at that point, the board will make a decision. 718 says the association has to provide, under their insurance policy, to repair in coverage for everything that's originally built by the developer and any material alteration that was approved by the association. Good. Now, your wonderful smart legislature, then lower in the section on the statute said, "The association doesn't have to pay to repair a material alteration or limited common element that solely benefits one unit owner." Now, how do you juxtapose the two? That's what I get paid to do, and that's where my team, as well as my partner, Steven Damzik, who you know, who's one of the brightest condo lawyers out there, Richard DeBose, and actually the gentleman that wrote that section of 718-111, who I've already spoke with, who's written a book on that issue, he and I are gonna be meeting to go over it. I'm about to get that letter from the insurance company with, "I wanna see every single invoice repair photograph, every single, from every unit owner. I wanna see all their voicemails, who they talked to, what did they email their grandma about what happened to their unit." They're also gonna say, "And we don't cover your lanai and screening enclosures." My response will be to write back a real smart lawyer letter to put them in their place and say, "That's fine, take that position, we're gonna be according to that." He knows that there's some push and give there. I don't see it as that. I see it as, we gotta cover it, it's gotta be insured, they gotta pay us for it, but I think on the totopole of things at the end, that we get down to certain items, and I don't think lanai enclosures, because my argument is, is that it's outside of the building, that's really like, hey, I'd like to put a air conditioner unit in my garage, which will be a little different, are you okay, because my grandma's in there. That's where the association has the pecking order of, all right, this, we spent all our return footage, better assessment, we borrowed what we can, we don't have money to go, we made a fake, we allowed this guy to make this small alteration to accommodate, you know, a handicapped person to get in and out of the garage or whatever it is, but we don't have to pay for it because we don't have those funds. Here, I've been successful, I've gotten it paid, it's not gonna be a hangup, so yes, things that were damaged, lanai, screen enclosures, it's all part of what's being written up by our team is what we're submitting, and that's a battle that we will have.
Thank you.
Question? It's a lot or a square?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know. Give me through the light. I have a light. The light is on. The light is on. Maybe the light's not working. Hold it, hold it, hello, hello.
There you are. There you are.
All right. I'm not totally clear on the 50% rule. I don't know if everyone totally understands that. Don't spend a lot of time if I need to have that explained afterward. Another thing was, what happens with these permits that were not closed out, and what priority are the repairs being done as opposed to owner occupancy?
Okay, the 50% rule, I can talk to you briefly after the meeting, unless there's a number of people here that are still unclear. Yeah, so, is everybody okay?
No, I think that there's, I see a lot of it lying in your head. It's basically as he said, that the county goes back five years, they look at everything that was done on that building. They don't care by unit or whatever. And if all of the repairs to that building add up to more than 50% of the property assessed value for all that units combined, FEMA can come in and say, "Sorry, you've now substantially rebuilt your entire unit, you need to now get it above the flood plain and tear it down and start over." That's what we're gathering, and they're gathering with all of the permits, adding up all these values and making sure we're doing that.
Right, right, let's stay up there below.
It's if you're below the flood elevation. Obviously, if you're above it, you don't need to be above it, but there's a lot of buildings out here that are not above it. So that's the 50%. Like he said, to restate what Jonathan Walsh, your building official and all those people said, "Look, we want the glades to be rebuilt the way it was, and we're gonna do whatever we can to work with you guys on that. I've already talked to county commissioners. It's a political battle if we need to have it, we're doing everything we can." But the importance about what the work this lady is doing and this team is doing by gathering all that is, once you run in and just throw some big numbers on the county's desk and say, "Here's what it's gonna cost," you can't put that cat back in the bag. If you hit that 50%, they're gonna have to start looking. So what this team is doing is figuring out where we sit per building, so we can figure out how we allocate what was done and what wasn't done. That is also critical, because let's say we cost X dollars to rebuild and get it ready so you guys can then come put paint, put refrigerators, or whatever you want in it. You're limited too. So if it costs too much to rebuild these, and one unit owner then goes and tries to pull a full remodel, he may find out, he only has $28,000 left to work with, and he's gonna say, "I need $35,000." That's why we put the moratorium on hold on the permits until we can figure out where are we at, how much has been spent, because there's been a lot of people that have out here that have pulled permits, remodeled kitchens, remodeled bathrooms, roof walls, that the association has no record of, and it's done over time. That's the portion of the 50% rule. Your other question was prioritizing owner occupancy.
And also, what happens with permits that were not closed out?
The permits that were not closed out is what this team is working around the clock on, gathering the information, going in, looking at units, and scheduling inspections with their schedule.
The permits are being reassigned to us. We're acquiring the 70 of them that are out there. There's a termination letter. Now they're being reassigned to Envirostruck. That'll allow us to get the inspections out of the way. The other 58 or so that's out there right now have not been issued will automatically be transferred to us based on a letter of termination. And then we'll go ahead and move forward getting inspections. And as I said earlier, they're going to go ahead and allow us to pull roofing permits. You know, so typically what they have to do is they have to close out, or at least put a CC on each one of them, you know, as it goes in phases, but because of what happened out here, they know we're out here, they know we need to get this thing done. And I sent an email to Jonathan yesterday or the day before. Got a response back, they will go ahead and issue the roofing permits as we need them. So then we can get the inspections done at the same time.
I just had a question. It appears that most of the damage was due to flat roof problems. Are they gonna make any engineering improvements?
I'm gonna let the GC answer that, but...
Yeah, there are several items out here, and it's called code compliance. You know, to create a positive flow, yes, we're gonna have that installation to make a positive flow. There are several items out here that we're gonna have to do. I think we briefly made a touch base. Hurricane strapping. Each one of these projects, we're gonna have to have an exploratory by bill for the building codes, they have to have straps. So we're gonna do an exploratory on the AC, which is the most cost-effective way to get those in, or those that, you know, have the straps, you know, making sure they're attached properly, get somebody to sign a seal, and we close the roof up and move on. AC units are a different animal, and again, there are certain code requirements on that and the exterior AC units attachments.
Okay, I have a... To the extent you do not hear the question, I'll try and repeat it for you guys as well.
Put the microphone closer to your mouth.
First of all, I appreciate the presentation, but I think it brings us up to date. I mean, a lot of us are still in the situation, but we also understand that the hurricane that also struck the glades. But I have just a couple questions. One is, the February 19th start date to roofs, weather permitting, is that a fixed date? And how long will it take to do a roof? And the only other thing that concerns me was, I guess, Brian's comment, or we've got three, or somebody's comment, we've got three roofing firms, I go to command, get ready, hammer the nails, put the shingles down. I just hope they're reputable firms so that we don't go through this again. Thanks.
Well, first of all, the firms have to fit our criteria, and that's not an easy one to do. You know, so I'm not, that is, that is the least of my concerns. You know, getting the job done is my priority. But as far as the, I have plugged in seven days for a roof for the simple fact that I don't know what's going to happen with rooftop units, and I don't know what's gonna happen with, in regard to the hurricane strapping. We can technically turn a roof loose out here, and in three to five days, inspections go down, we're out of here. You know, so I, and I put a safety net in there in the event that we have to tear off more plywood, or we have to, you know, for a couple other items. So the 19th, in my world, yes, and based on what we've been told, you know, we can't see a reason why we can't move forward in this, because I've got a meeting I have to have with them to compare numbers on the buildings I've identified here. And I'm sure we'll get there from here, I'm not too worried about that. They give me the okay on that, and I go to contact myself on these specific ones. You know, and we'll start, you know, we'll bring in material. We're gonna pull a soft start anyway, and start setting some, you know, I know you don't hear this, the cordlets and, you know, bringing some materials, start getting to the things. But there's something here, again, if you go back in, if we would have these several discussions, because out of the different sections are obviously different colors of roofs. And we'll get color cords dropped off out here for the glades themselves to have the associated section, you know, identify what shade or what is. I've not been told of any material delays right now. That doesn't mean it won't happen. But again, we're being informed that there's plenty to go around, unless there's a color that's gonna be discontinued, or, I mean, you name it. You know, you can't, certain things you can't change. But again, we've got several different suppliers that we pull from in regard to this, so, you know, between Tamco, Owens Corning, Certainty, I mean, I'm not really concerned about, we see if the color's picked out, so you can turn it out here and get, again, the permits. The 19th seems to be a comfort date for me, because that gives us time to get the county involved, and since they, I may be able to pick up on that now since they've agreed to give the notice. So that's kinda where I'm hoping.
I'll just chime in real quick on the sub-issue. We hired Envirostruck because we know who they use and what they use, and we know their reputation. They're doing this job, which is a massive job. They're not gonna go hire some fly-by-night guy. They're national companies, or they're large local companies. I'll be doing my own vetting and background checks into them as well, but we rely on these guys to make sure they have the people that are here. Unlike other general contractors, one of the main reasons I really like this guy, when we talked to him, he said, "Look, I'm not gonna go out and just award this whole thing to a local, big roofer," because roofers, like all contractors, are taking on more work than they can handle right now. You grab as much as you can, and then you make excuses why we gotta delay, 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 and it's just the way it works in the world. He's not turning one roofer out across this thing and awarding the whole thing, because then you can't get them out of here if you have a problem. He's gonna do it in batches of 20 roofs, 20 to this, a big roofer, 20 to this company, 20 to this company, and if they're moving fast and they can do it, they're gonna get 20 more faster, 20 more faster. And that way, if these people are slow or not showing up with manpower, after you finish the 20, get out of here. You can't keep up with this. So it's methodical and it's thought-out, is the best I can say. As fast as they can move, they will. Sir, standing up.
I have, can sunrise for?
I have a couple of questions, and a couple of which, which button do I push?
There you are.
I have a couple of questions with you. You're correct, Brian, I just wanna know, Brian, how much was the advance that you got from an insurance company, and how was it distributed? And I would also, the $4 million that you mentioned, was that in advance against our claim? And I have a question for Marty. Back in November, I received a phone call at my home in Illinois that our condo had to be inspected, I had to sign a waiver report to be inspected, okay? And that was from Envirostruck, to your company. And this morning, somebody knocked on my door from Keys and said our unit has to be inspected. And they wanted to do it today, said they said there was a team here. I think it was inspected two or three times by Velocity and everything was clean, so I just have to...
Let me answer that real quick question for you. Your unit was inspected by Velocity to mitigate damages. Your unit's been inspected by Keys Claims so they can write the repair phone calls and estimates. The insurance company, by contract, has the right to inspect your unit. The people that are out right now knocking on your doors accompanied by Keys Claims people are the insurance company's teams doing what they are allowed to do and come and inspect it. We can't stop them from doing it, and if we do, they're looking to deny the claim by We can't stop them from doing it, and if we do, they're looking to deny the claim by saying, "Oh, you refused to let us in, we were there with our teams, and therefore we're not paying you for that unit."
Okay, the answer to your question about us. We've retained the services of H2O911, which is a huge company down here. We go in and we are, we are to determine what we see, so we're as a backup to what it is that they're doing. If we have to do any additional mitigation, then they have to approve it, and we can move forward with it upon approval. So, you know, there's, there's three, taking Velocity could put me off the table, because I really don't know what they did, and it's no concern now. But as far as Keys is concerned, their people, they're the ones that's going to be paying the money, so they need to get in. We're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to give an estimate for it to compare to their money, so we need to take a look at it too, so we're doing a scope.
When the guy, when the guy from Keys came this morning, he came, knocked on the door and said, "We have to inspect your unit." I said, "Well, yeah, come on in and do it." And he said, "No, there's a team behind me that's going to inspect it."
Yeah, they may not have gotten to it yet, I mean, the first thing that Keys started doing, I understand that, is they started the exterior, these to get assessors, you know, I mean, this whole complex. And then they started migrating, and the interiors are getting those that were worse off. You know, it's Velocity had done that, so, uh, and then, somebody didn't understand the word strapping. Let me go back to that. Hurricane strapping is a code requirement. It is fastened onto the trusses, basically, sits on the tie beam, and they have to be attached. You know, it keeps the uplift, it keeps the roof coming off there in any event, sustained weight. That's what, that's what it's for, so there's a code here. Well, it doesn't, it really, it's an attachment. It's not, Simpson makes a really good strap, goes down, passes into the tie beam, and up along both sides of the truss, you know, sort of rash. So, that's what it's used to hold on. And, but you get the winds, they go up the wall, they go up the socket, they'll push the roof off. And those straps are designed to keep that from happening. Essentially, yeah.
To finish that question, where, where's the money for that $1 million dollar bill, Brian?
The, the money was just burst, and I know that there's a, a big la la about, you know, how much do the attorneys get, and why do they get paid? We have a contract that we were hired on, it was on a contingency basis. One of the things that the board didn't wanna do, and most associations don't wanna do, is to pay my firm $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 a month over the next several years to try and fight this battle. We took it on a contingency. I, I have some board members that are mad that I went and got you guys a bunch of money, because they're like, I think they'd be happier if I never got you any money, because then I wouldn't have got a share. The reason that money came was because of the work that we did. That money was paid pursuant to the statute, or pursuant to our contracts, to the 10%, to Keys claims, to the 15% of my firm. Now, that money may be the only money we get for the next year, two, three. It took four, five years in Wilma to finally get paid. I've talked to the board, I don't think they wanna switch to start paying me, which could be $10,000, $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 a month. I have a multitude team of attorneys, paralegals, and experts that I have working on all of these claims around the clock. I am burying the attorneys that work for me and the amount of work this takes. We will, and have, earned what we've been paid, and I'm, some board members, I've seen those emails, "Don't bring it up, we don't want the residents..." No, I'm transparent, I have nothing to hide. I know that for a fact, what we were able to do thus far by getting that money, we've already earned our fee over. The amount of work that I'm gonna put up with not seeing another dollar, and maybe not many more for the next year, two, or three, until we get this thing done, it's gonna be paid. And more importantly, what we were able to do with Velocity. I mean, the board did the right thing, and they actually hired, knock on wood, a great company that, that compared to what I've seen. And trust me, I know people are grumbling out there, "You haven't seen my unit, and they smashed my sink." I have mitigation companies that have gone in and done 50 times more than they need to do in communities. No permits, no nothing, no contract. They came in, they, they, they got a, a contract signed that we wanted to fight, because it, it allowed them to make a claim to try and take all of your insurance proceeds. We went to battle on that, we put our feet in the ground and told them that, "You have until 5:00 P M. to sign this new contract that Brian Croft prepared, that says the Glades isn't paying a penny that isn't justified and approved by the insurance company, or the sheriff's office is gonna take you and all your people off this property." Finally, at 4:00 P M. that day, they came in and signed it, and thank God they did, because otherwise, you'd have a 4.7 or 8, depending on what day you ask Velocity, lien against this property, and you'd have a big, long, four, five-year lawsuit about what was the reasonable value under an unjust infringement. If we, if we won the contract claim, we would then go to, okay, well, what was the reasonable value for all the work they did? And they'd have all their experts saying, "Oh, it's worth $4.7 million, pay us that." We'd have our people saying, "Oh, it's only worth $2 million," or, "For $3 million." That's the battle. We've gotten to, nothing finalized from insurance company yet. We've not given any more money that the insurance company hasn't already agreed, that they are going to approve towards EMS money, which would be Velocity money. And I make that statement, because anything that Velocity's paid has nothing to do with how much you're gonna get paid to rebuild your units, or two separate parts of money. Velocity was given a million dollars out of that towards the advance. We have an informal agreement that they keep trying to have their lawyers send me letters saying, "Oh, great, you guys struck an agreement, you're paying me $2.1 million in 25 days." I made it very clear, no, we have one agreement with you, Velocity. When that insurance company sends me a check and tells me this is for Velocity, you get that. If the insurance company only approves $1 million that they've already approved, they approved more than that, but I only gave Velocity a lot less of it, because I didn't have it finite proven. Velocity, the insurance company has agreed roughly, they think it's about 2, 2, 1, that they're gonna be able to justify as what they believe they'll pay Velocity. But at the end of the day, if they say, "Look, we've went and spot checked, we've now gone through all the units, we've seen what Velocity's done, we've run our own estimates, we've verified that they didn't have this many dumpsters, they didn't have that big core bodies, we're only paying them $1.4 million." That's it. They're not coming after you guys for the other $2.3 million, they're not coming after you for another funding, because they can't. So, I hope that answers the question. Sir?
I'm an absentee landlord and building owner. At this stage, after the hurricane, I lost my denot.
You live in the Glades?
I live in the Glades.
Sunrise four?
No, that's not the Glades.
Yeah, that's not the Glades.
No.
You're, you're, the Glades doesn't insure Sunrise four. They have their own condominium association? That's who you have to direct those questions to, because I can't answer them, I don't represent them. Sunrise has some golfing privileges, I believe, based on the declaration, but, but yeah, you, you'll have to contact your own property manager or your own...
You're all alike.
Tell them they gotta find a different lawyer.
This just looked like an old fun party, right?
I vote for our association, and they say we're not providing for the, uh, I vote to the insurance company, and they tell me that the association should pay for it.
You know, if, if you wanna send me an email, I can refer you to, to a Florida attorney that may be able to help your association or help your management out. I can't comment on that, because I don't know what caused the damage, I don't know what your declaration says. I understand, sir, I'll, I'll try to... Okay, ma'am.
I'm confused about my responsibility to the contents. When Velocity came and inspected my unit, which was completely totaled, they told me that they would remove everything that was moldy. And they came with meters, and, uh, they're gone. The furniture is in the middle of the living room stacked up, and then furniture is in the lanai cupboard. And speaking, this gentleman said that the responsibility to remove, remove it would be mine. And if so, do I have to get it contracted and pay him to remove my stuff?
Yes, her question effectively is, if she has interior contents that are damaged or wet, that weren't removed by Velocity, what, what was removed by Velocity? And whatever there, they go to the association, or whatever, you should submit to your insurance company if you have insurance, as well as an estimate from a contractor to remove whatever else is damaged, and then, what it's gonna cost to replace it and fix it. And your insurance company should be paying you, as he stated, to remove wet, damaged, destroyed, or tampered content, because those belong to you. What we're talking about is what belongs to all of you, which is your HVAC, your plumbing, electrical. So, the short answer is yes.
As I said earlier, we retain the services of H2O911. Uh, they are, they are content, they're full blown. It's not part of our agreement, they're in here for us for additional mediation. So, what I can do is, we can make them accessible to. We can get contact information, because that is what they do, they do pack outs, they do cleans, everything else. It's just not covered under AL, and they work very closely with their insurance company out there. The purpose of bringing them in was to be able to assist you if we need to...
My insurance company has already sent me a check for my dwellings, so that, and, and the properties.
Her question, well, her statement is that her insurance company has already sent her a check for her dwellings. Is there additional damages and additional stuff that has to be removed, or expenses that H2O says? They'll work with your insurance company to do a supplemental plan to get additional funds if what they sent you is not enough.
Yeah, we have a carryout that will help you. All I gotta do is just, you know, get with my guy.
I have two questions. One, with respect to the bank loan that you referred to, have you drawn on it, given the fact that you were able to get this gratuitous payment?
Uh, the answer is no, they have not.
Okay, and do you anticipate drawing on it? And if so, would any interest be payable by the insurance company? Because theoretically, the, the cause of it was the hurricane happened today, not six months from now when they decide to pay it. So, that's question one.
Uh, the short answer is no. Insurance companies pay you to replace and rebuild stuff if you don't have the funds, or you have to borrow. Um, they don't pay interest, they don't pay certain things that are included in the policy. Um, is it gonna have to be drawn on? I, I would imagine, I, I mean, I don't have final numbers or bids. We have a couple million dollars that we already have in there, we have reserves that we have in there, we have some operating expenses, we're Todd's working to crunch the numbers. But to the extent it will. Part of the reason why I can't sit here and say, "This will be drawn for section 1, 2, 1A, 3," is because I don't yet have a breakdown on what makes up this claim, why they're paying it, or how much they gave, how that came. That's what they're working on, and I'm told I'll have in the next week or two, from their adjuster, or a couple weeks. That's important, because if you remember, the exercise that I had to spend weeks doing here after we got the big check on Wilma's, each of your sections has a percentage that was allocated, or a dollar amount, with that Wilma umpire report that said, "Section 1 got $1.4 million that occurred every unit, this unit it got $18, this one got $27,000." That then goes into each section. The extent that was used for reserves to do emergency repairs had to get reimbursed back to that section's reserve. And then that section has to figure out what the bill is for their section roof repairs, and figure out how much of that insurance money can be used. So, the accounting side of this, because you guys live in this wonderful community that is like basically a city with 12 different sections, but one corporation with 12 different, Bank of Texas full of declarations, it makes it difficult. Gentlemen, in the back...
One more, please. And that is, you spoke as if the special assessment was happening. Uh, what is the reason for the special assessment? Isn't it deductible that you're, that you anticipate? And, uh, why a special assessment versus an increase in common expenses? Who will make that decision?
Your board of directors will make that decision, and they haven't made that decision, because we don't know what it's gonna cost to fix your place, we don't know how much money the insurance company is gonna be giving you by the time we're done, and we don't know how much purchasing power this guy's gonna exert on his suppliers to get things done at rates better than what we were paid on. That's the whole thing that we're juggling. We're defraying that decision to the end. It's, it's a director's decision, as all special assessments are, but I'm sure that they're going to factor in community approval and discussions about that issue before we make that decision, because at the end of the day, you elect them, they gotta do what's in the best interest of the community, and if it's an increase a little bit to here, cut the budget here, and let's assess this, that's something that the board will make, I have nothing to do with it. I go get you a bunch of money, I help get your contractors in, sequence, make sure they're doing their job, and get the place rebuilt. They decide how, how they're going to continue to fund it. But, it, it's not just, I mean, you gotta think about it. You had, uh, complete catastrophic catastrophe hurricane that ripped off damage to 90%, 80, 90%, have some type of damage to the roofs. We have lanai damage. We had large dollar fingers of debris cleanup that didn't hit the buildings, that isn't covered by insurance, but has to be paid for. We've been able to work a lot of that into the Velocity numbers to get, as part of that reimbursement, but those are the things that add up as to why there could be an assessment. My goal is, is to get it, not have it happen, or minimize it as much as possible. Gentleman in the back, sir?
Yes, going forward, uh, our roof has been put on, the drywall is in.
Please can you use the microphone, please?
Legally, what is the homeowner allowed to do in his unit?
His question was, is once these guys replink their roof on, and these people put up drywall, and it's done, what is a unit owner allowed to do after that?
Basically, once we get the sign off on, on the drywall inspection, or interior, electrical, plumbing, you're good to go on what you want. The only thing we're asking for you to do, again, I'll have these numbers, or case by case, is, is be very careful. Yeah, there's two things that come with a storm, a catastrophic and a bunch of thieves. So, general contractors are in, you know, belief out there of these storms, that there's more work out there than they can charge anything they want to. So, buyer beware, be very smart with what you're, who you're hiring, and what you're doing.
What is the homeowner allowed to do himself?
Once...
As long as, you know, basically, as long as it can get to a CO within a timeframe, it doesn't really matter to me. I mean, if you're, if you're able to put cabinets in, as long as it's not a permittable type item. Now, there's, there's a little caveat with in, in, in building codes. Owner, builder, you can apply for your own permit, you're gonna be putting in sinks, and I highly recommend you do that. Cabinets, sinks, on a full remodel, because there are dollar amount thresholds. So, you'll wanna apply for your own permit, you know, on what it is that you're doing. You're not allowed to do heavy electrical and plumbing, because those require a licensed contractor, and HVAC is the same thing.
That, that will be done by Envirostruck.
But, the drywall, we will have to.
The drywall and the roof, once it's done and taped and muddied in with multiple coats, it's ready to go, you then decide who you wanna hire to put cabinets in, what type of fridge cleaner, appliances you wanna put in, what type of paint you wanna use, whether you want blinds, anything from the drywall and flooring, all that's up to you guys, and it should be covered by your personal insurance on your units to be reimbursed as part of what you're claiming.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, if I'm putting up trim on a window, and an inspector walked in, can I be fined?
No, not on trail.
What I would say is, yeah, check with your contractor, or check with the building department about what they're allowing you to do, what needs permit, what doesn't. Yes, ma'am, in the back with the microphone.
We're, we're talking about the loss assessment. When did the loss assessment ever have $250 deductible? There's never been a deductible in this loss assessment.
There actually is by statute, it is in there, separate, in, in the statutes under the policies as they're written. It may not, they may not show it to you, your insurance company might not tell you, but if you ask your insurance agent who writes your individual insurance, "I need to know what my deductible is for my loss assessment, and what the policy amount is," by law, they have to tell you, and I promise you, it's, it's 250 on the 2,000. Okay, but, but I promise you, it's there. I got a microphone here, and then here, here, and, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm one of the unfortunate owners that had his unit completely gutted, including taking the toilet off the floor and putting the bathtub. Um, I know it was wet, but it wasn't moldy. Um, my question is, and you said earlier that the reconstruction project would include any plumbing that was inside the walls, air conditioning ductwork?
No, he's just gonna get a closing.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Yeah, earlier on, you mentioned that, uh, the reconstruction process would include the plumbing inside the walls, air conditioning ductwork that was taken out. Uh, my question is, they took all the plumbing, including my water heater, that's in the middle of the living room floor, and they cut off all the plumbing that would, you know, connected to it, obviously, and to the toilet, and the sink. They took out all my vanities, and of course, they cut off all the plumbing. So, all the plumbing I have is about two inches sticking out of the wall that's been capped off. My question is, in the reconstruction, are you folks gonna redo that plumbing fully? Or do I have to hire a plumber to come in and replumb the whole unit?
That's what we consider in-wall. We'll make sure that our valves and everything is there, because we've seen a lot of the stuff cut through. You know, in-wall means, that's what they do, we put the shut-off valves, we make sure that you've got, you know, place a dump for your drains, uh, and there's nothing broken there, like the stacks and things like that, you know, with that. But, the valves and stuff, yes, we will put back on there. We'll take what they've done and make it to where you can work with it once the drywall's up. You can't get back to it unless you rip my drywall out, and that's not gonna be a good thing.
Right, but they are, well, my question would be, again, are they gonna rehook that plumbing to my sinks, my bathtub?
No.
So, I'm gonna have to hire a plumber to rehook all my utilities such as...
We'll do the scum outs and the valves, and that's as far as they...
That's as far as you go. So, in other words, I'll get a plumber in to redo my hot water heater?
That's correct.
Sinks and everything.
And your insurance actually should be helping you out with that.
Well, I do have insurance for my question. The reason why I asked the question is, I wanna be able to tell my insurance company what they're gonna have to do.
Like I said, tell your insurance company they have to pay for everything, and let them fight you on it. That's my motto. Ma'am, next question. Yes, ma'am.
We may increase when they're, it just depends. I, my, my mission is to allocate that many roofs at a time to a contractor. I'm gonna break those down into five and 10 increments, because, like I said, I've got resources that allows me to expand beyond that. But, I, you know, there's, oh, I said I have the resources to, 20 roofs is what we've got pinned in to get started, because that's the ones I'm sure, you know, at that point. We, we will increase that volume. But what we wanna do is, we've got, again, three or four concept contractors that are at our disposal, a couple of them are national. And I do it on a performance, because if I, I give them, you know, any more than 20, 20 seems to be where I can, I get a break, you know, on how it goes in. But if I give them 30 or 40 up front, and the wheels fall off that bus, I'm contractually locked into them.
Well, it gives us a timeline to find out, to see how fast it's willing to get those roofs.
Yeah, they, they look at the window of time for all the roofs out here, and again, depending on how this settles out, and right at 180 days.
180 days.
Yeah, it seems to be a magic number, seems to get for areas.
Okay, and then, how did you determine, you said the 40 that you're gonna start with?
My guys went through and assessed interior damages, what was outside, and what we were giving notification on is definitely being full roofs, that means the flat and the shingle.
So, if you do this one, you're not going section by section?
No, I would like to, but that's not how they're getting released.
And, and it's based on what the insurance company has agreed has to be a full replacement, because we don't wanna go do a full replacement when they said, "Oh, why'd you do that? We could've repaired it." That's why we had to get them out there for these inspections, and as they check them off, and they agree, "This is the worst hit, worst done," these guys factor it in, so their FEMA calculation, so they can start to figure this out. Like you said, it's an evolving learning process. We may get through these and figure out how we're gonna access the strapping on these roofs, to come up with a better, faster, easier method, and then we can release 20 roofs, 20 roofs, 20 roofs, 20 roofs, 20 roofs, and fly through it, and it may be faster than 180 days. We just gotta see what we uncover, like we found when we took that slider off that unit there, or there. What was holding that prior slider in was just some Q by fours that just, somebody jammed in. No nails, no nothing, and there's gonna be something that's gonna be uncovered on these roofs, like I said, that's gonna be in the field. Art, your engineer, is gonna have to write a spec on, "Here's how we're gonna fix this with value-added engineering, so we don't have to deal with it, get it to code."
There has to be a write-up of the spec, is that correct? Are, are you gonna, are you gonna file twice, or are all the contractors, starts the same thing?
The specifications have already been prepared.
Specifications have already been prepared, and the contractors will be vetting on specs that meet county's and code requirements. Yes, ma'am?
I have a short roof question. The membranes, will they be strapped down to prevent them from flying off again?
When a roof is rebuilt, it will meet the current building code and have whatever tie-in, strap-downs, locks, membrane attachments, a sufficient number of nails. That's what this super smart guy right here, as the engineer, writes in those specifications, and that's what this guy builds and does. So, yes, you will be getting roofs that are up to the brand-new building code, which, another wrinkle, I think, just changed January...
1st.
January 1st. building code, which, another wrinkle, I think, just changed January 1st, January 1st, 2017. So we got a new code that we're dealing with.
And is that in there? Are they strapped down? These membranes are when they fly off.
Well, you know, a membrane doesn't have a strap on them, they're tack, but if a category five hurricane hits, there's no guarantee that certain things won't fall off again, but it will be built right to the specifications, just like every other roof can be done.
Let me add something to this. The membrane roofs that you're talking about, we're putting on, has a 20-year warranty. So against doing what it says you're going to do, it's all in how it's asked, it's an attachment, there's a spec.
Ours was three years old, or what?
I-
That's what I said.
And, but, but again, ma'am, it blew off, not because of 20-year wear and tear, it's because we were hit with a category four hurricane. And I had it happen in an association where a unit owner was trying to pin me in to act like the association had to rebuild his whole interior unit and his fridge and everything. He's like, well, since the association let this water in my unit, I stopped him, I was like, sir, a category four kinda let itself in your unit. This board didn't go ahead and let windows in. So they're working on it, we're gonna make sure. That's why we have these professionals, because we're gonna try and do it the best we can.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, can we please ask everyone to please keep your sidebar power sessions, please stop so we can hear the questions, anybody can get the answers to the one, please. Thank you very much.
Can I have everybody raise their hand to the extent they have an additional question in the entire room?
Okay.
Okay, I got 12 left. Let's finish it up, because we have these other professionals here that are talking to you. Whoever's next, sir, you have a mic.
Brian, with regards to the wind mitigation, it's my understanding that with the hurricane strapping, that if we get a wind mitigation certificate from you once it's done, that that will actually lower our personal insurance premiums.
That is a true statement. That's why some premiums are lower, because we have hardened windows that were put in, and the ones that had mitigation credits for straps. The ones that are gonna be put in by building, that come with straps, now you gotta unpack windows and sliders, you will get a mitigation credit. And it's a large credit. I wanna say it was like 35 or 40% for my house by the time I was done. Ma'am?
Yes, I have lost my lanai, but in the process, I wanna know, I have ordered windows from last year, they're here, ready for someone to put in an enclosed lanai. Is that, you cannot do that?
You gotta run that by your contractor, because we gotta make sure that the unit's been inspected by the association's insurance company, because we can't change the condition. And Mr. Sims?
Your lanai was damaged in Hurricane Arman?
It's gone, it's gone. And last year, I ordered the windows.
You don't have to wait until this claim is processed, because we've got an issue with the lanais at this point. Insurance companies don't wanna cover that, Brian's fighting to get coverage on that. We have good documentation where we believe you are gonna get that covered, but until we get that settled, you don't need to replace that lanai.
And to the extent that we obtain funds for your damaged lanai, although you may have paid more for the windows than we're gonna be able to get them for, and both purchasing power to replace them, the association, as they did with the Wilma money, will give unit owners their per-section perorative share of those insurance proceeds to be credited towards your account. I back, there's a question, please yell. Ms. Ruby?
Yeah, two, I don't think this works. Two questions. One, you said that the insurance company must have a goodness of their heart sent us $4 million. I thought we went to the bank, we borrowed a million. And we also asked the insurance company for an exam. And I come out, here's your account. Mr. Lidle asked about the $4 million, where that money went. Could you tell us where all those funds went?
I think we just explained it based on the percentages and the-
The Glades got 1.9 million of the full job.
1.9 and change, yes. You had a 4-point-something-million-dollar bill with Velocity that the insurance company has approved. They had already given me a writing saying that they were gonna pay at Velocity at least 1.6, 1.7, 1.8, and they think it'll be around the 2, 2.1 number by the time we're done. But again, I don't care about that, because we're not paying them anything, the insurance company didn't agree to pay them. We advanced Velocity the million dollars, because they were about to try and sue us, because they had been out here for months, and they did spend a tremendous amount of time and money and resources, did a lot of work, and had to pay this much money. That advanced. You can do the math. 15% of the 3.9-something million was gone to my firm, which was 590 or something. 10% went to Keys Flames for the work that they did. They didn't send it out of the kindness of their heart, because they didn't have that kindness in their heart after Wilma, when they refused for a year to pay you guys anything. They sent it because of the work that we've done out here, because of the estimates that have been written, the units that have been inspected, the temporary repairs that have been done, the stuff that's been ripped out, the drywall, the EMS. That's where those funds went. And that's where, in accordance with the contracts and what was agreed upon by the board, and I think by you, when it was a unanimous vote, when we approved all this stuff at this meeting as to how it was going to be done and compensated. Trust me, it wasn't gracious as their heart. Yes, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry, you're next, sir, I apologize.
Do you have a list of all roofs that are gonna be totally replaced, or partially replaced, and what about the ones that the wind just actually lifted up and then put back down? And then, what about the cracks, or what I understood, they have to come into the interior unit and totally remove?
No, 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 I'll clarify, don't worry about that. Her question was, is, do we have a list? We have a preliminary list that has been being used, a living, breathing document by this guy and the association's insurance adjuster, as to, here's all the roofs that are damaged out here, here's where we both agree this has gotta get a full replacement, and here's where we think it can be repaired. That's what we're fighting day in and day out by requiring secondary inspections, saying, no, 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 you're not just gonna patch this, you gotta replace it. If your roof was lifted off your building and fell back down, they are going to have to build it to code, and the insurance company's gonna have to pay you to get it fixed, which means restrapping it, replacing it, or repairing it as determined by what these experts say and what our insurance company agrees upon. There are alternatives, and I won't bore you with it, methodologies on how to reconnect roofs and meet current code. He's written up a lot of the specs, meaning your engineer. There are ways to go in through the soffit, there are ways that contractors can get in through attics, there are ways that can be tied in to where you don't have to go cut out interior drywall and start attaching straps, so you can do connectors, overtie thieves, et cetera.
Okay, well, the last thing was, I had water actually come from where the floor and the wall meet through my kitchens. So I understand they're gonna come in and, and when they're signed, they will look at it.
Yes, they are in there with remediation company's Velocity. I can't speak to that exact fact pattern lots of times. You may see water coming this way, and you think it is, but water takes the path of least resistance. It may, when their roof came up, came in, filled up your wall cavity, it may be from where the wind blew in the building, shifted, and there's a crack in the foundation. If that happens, that'll be part of the claim, it'll be recovered. These are the experts that go and tell me what was broken out here and why it's covered by air膜.
Okay, and so they-
Yes, sir, I know. And I'm trying not to ignore you, I'm just trying to pick up-
I'm gonna talk a minute.
Go ahead, sir.
Since September 11, I've been without a home. I've moved three times, different places. I finally got a place now, within the Glades here. I've came to these meetings waiting on some information when my home is gonna be repaired. Today, you still gave me a bunch of different things, but still nothing about when next month or when my homes are gonna be repaired. I'm sorry.
I certainly understand your frustration.
Don't have an answer, never have.
I do not, and I cannot. I can tell you what your contractors are doing, what the county's requiring us to do. To the extent your unit is in a certain building, a certain section, that is what Mr. Plaine has asked, that you stop into his trailer so we can figure out what's been approved by the insurance company, what's been inspected. Nothing could get done until the insurance company finally got out here this week and looked at all the units. They cannot go in and rebuild drywall until the roofs are fixed, because contractors won't do the work. They cannot go and put new roofs on until the demolition permits are done proper, and they're closed out, and they're ordered, and we can get them finished and get the inspections done. That's what we've been covering this whole time, and that's where we're trying to get as much information as scheduled as possible. I know it's frustrating, you know? Your team's doing the best they can.
Sounds good, but when?
February 1st, 2020. Groups are starting in the beginning of February. That's what was discussed. Mid-February. So we know groups- Mid-February.
February 19.
February 19, but that is the ones that are the worst hit, and they're moving through it. I don't know where you sit or where it falls, but you were able to get continued up from information from your general contractor. What building, what building is your unit in?
160, number 2, Hitty Lane.
And this good.
Bear with me a moment.
I think we're past 20.
This document with the list of where they are, where they put the schedule, we got-
If it is on the list, we have to get it date, because they're waiting for a permit release on it. It is on our first list and runs to date. So we'll put it in there right about the end of February 1st of March. It will not be, what we started on at that point, we'll run through the bleachers I told her about before. And once we get one, you know, the envelope sealed, we can start moving inside.
Yes, ma'am?
Well, I thought it'd be 1st of March.
My question is this, is the Glade when we bury in, checking on every single one, make sure positive, I have docs have been done, and the teeth crossed, as you go, after everything's been done. And if I asked that, it becomes, we had the doors put in, there were issues with, you know, individuals had to complain about what happened with their doors, and we didn't feel there was anything where the Glade itself was checked.
What will happen is, is your general contractor will be working with your subcontractors to do the roofs, the drywall, whatever, door damage, whatever they be, and they don't get approved for that work until these guys approve them, and if there's an issue, our engineer will approve it, then they'll get approved, they'll be inspected, and then it'll have to get passed the test to make sure that it's done correct, because the county will be here to inspect it as well. We should have about five or six left. Sir, in the back? Yes, sir?
Back to the 50% rule.
I'll repeat it for you, but go ahead.
Back to the 50% rule, if someone is working in their, trying to, are they even to now, would the improvements they make from now be counted for that?
His question is, if someone is working within their unit right now, would those, would those be counted towards a 50% rule? Yes, it will. And if they pull the permit, it'll have it done. The reason why I sent that letter to the county and these guys jumped in and the county got on us is to put a stop to this until we can get our hands around what it is. But yes, to the extent that people have done or were in the process of doing stuff pre or post hurricane, all of that factors in towards that valuation.
No one should be working in there now?
It, a letter, I think, went out, several letters have gone out from my firm, telling people what they're allowed to do and not allowed to do. We've gone after with the building department. I will get with Todd and Marty to get another letter out, so we can get it to people. But yes, some stuff is being done that we can't stop, because they don't have damage to their building. And if they don't have damage to their building, we're allowing them to finish the lanais that they approved and allow them to apply for new arch stuff. It's only stuff that has damage to buildings that compromise the claim or compose those claims. Sorry, ma'am.
It's okay, I have a couple of questions. Would we get information from Velocity as to, like, the mold mitigation reports or any reports that Velocity did?
The question about whether we will get, and Marty, this may be for you too, whether they will get copies of the Velocity reports on any of the mold testing or the stuff that was done. Yes, Velocity's bills and records that they've given to us have been provided. They weren't very thorough, they didn't keep the best records, and I might have some issues with it. But that's where Envirestruct and the team at Keys Flames are going through and clearing units, and as they come across things with H2O that says, well, look, there's still some wet here, or whatever, they will then address it to address our older tests needs to be done, and what needs to be done to remove whatever else is there.
So if our insurance company needs it, will we be able to wire the information to our insurance company?
If your insurance company is requesting occupation, then yes, you can submit a request to us at the administration office, and I will work to try and get them whatever they can.
Okay. And probably a question, ours is one of them that's totally gutted, 300 turns, no roof.
And we're on the front list.
Yep. So when you, I understand you'll do the drywall, but when they came in for that, you know, our master bath shower pan is all chopped up, and, but, so to coordinate you with me, because that pan is, I don't want that, you know, the little step thing anymore, but I know you're not gonna do that improvement, how will we coordinate?
The question was, is how will they coordinate, Marty, how will they coordinate what these people are gonna do, what they have to repair pursuant to the statute that the association has to do, versus when I wanna then bring my contractor in, and I don't want that step into my shower, I wanna change the shower panel in the sink. That is a question for Marty to answer.
I'll take a look and see, because if what you've got there cannot be reconstructed, refilled, or, you know, if it's a want, your insurance company is going to say, well, we want you to keep it. You know, but if something can't be backed up in standards of safety, you know, then the insurance company is gonna allocate it to the Glades. And here's a unique case. We'll take a look at a case by case on these items, because there are things we're gonna have to take out. There are some things we're gonna have to do. And that's somewhere between me and him on what that is and what that looks like. Because I can't go in and somebody's put a half a sheet of drywall and they've cut down, there's not a stud there, I'm gonna have to put framing in or some sort of blocking or backing into it. You know, I just can't have two pieces of drywall blacking the wind. So these are things that we're going to have to do, and again, like case by case, you know, on what gets taken out.
So will you contact, I live in Wisconsin, I have no place to be, so we're going back and forth.
We have access to 300. All you do is send us and get it to Frank, you know, kind of a list of items that you want us to address, take a look at, and then we'll get back with you at that, whatever it is on. Because like I said, you're in this, kind of this first room for the next, you know, 30, 45 days if we probably take it.
And then, all of our, as this one person mentioned, our belongings are in there, tarp in the middle of this room, the cabinets are in this room, the kitchens in that room. Do I get everything out of there?
Yes, unfortunately, that's gonna have to happen.
So I have to contact my insurance company?
Your insurance company should pay a reimbursement for a packout. And again, H2O is approved with the insurance industry to do this, they're very good. And we can make that contact information, you know, available to you, whether we do it through, you know, do it through Todd, you know, Derry's office, and get ahold of them, you know, in regard to if you have packouts in there. Because that's the one thing that we're gonna have to be really careful of. If I walk into a unit, virtually sitting against a framed wall, you know, against a framed wall, and I can't work in that space, I am going to lock that unit back up, until such time as that stuff's out and taken out of there. Because all that's going to do is hamper the next person. And we're trying to get out of here, the window, time of me trying to get out of here is probably, realistically, is gonna be a little more than a year.
It's in the center of the room, though.
Yeah, it's in the center of the room, it's covered up, at that point, again.
Let's do-
It's dusty, I mean, everybody's been around drywall, this is dusty.
Let's do one or two more questions, and then I'll step outside and I'll take the remaining queue. But I know that we got a lot of people here that are waiting to present, and they're probably tired of hearing me. Yes, ma'am, you, and then I think there was a gentleman there.
My question is, my question is-
Sorry.
90% of my condo's gone.
If we could all pay attention, please, stop the chat.
Okay, 90% of my condo's gone, but my bathroom is the only good thing. I would like to remodel that bathroom, I know that's on me, but how, what's my protocol? How do I do this?
We gotta get the drywall back up, the plumbing, the electrical stuff to code, pass inspections, and then get it ready to go to get to approved CO. Then you can turn off and rebuild whatever you would like in your unit.
Okay, second, when is the drywall coming in?
The drywall is coming in until roofs are off and new roofs are on.
I understand that, so I actually have February 19 mark for roofs.
Yeah, I have got nothing on this schedule listing drywall for one simple reason, is because I have access to several different crews in drywall. As soon as they start tearing that roof off, we're gonna come right back in with bid and start packing. So as soon as that roof's tight, we're gonna drywall probably by the time the last nail on that roof, you know, shank.
It'll be contemporaneous, there's nothing being held back. As soon as they can, by permit, by county inspection, start to rebuild drywall, they'll do it before, like you said, the roof's even dried in.
I'd like to interject something here for everyone to listen.
Now, each thing, there's, you're bringing some unique things, I don't mean to interrupt Todd, so there's some unique things getting brought up. And it's kind of a case by case, you know, on what we see. How can we help? We'll answer, we'll answer, we'll do anything that we can to help you through the process. We're not gonna leave you hanging out. So, you know, in getting that, again, it's a case by case, but moving everything out of the unit, again, is a case by case. Sitting in the room, just like what Brian said, and we can work around it, as long as you're secure with it, you know, if somebody's a little dirty, then that's fine. But when you've got a situation where they're alert in piles, in every room, it's packed, the best thing for them to do, being, I told them, is to get it out. You know, it'll speed up the process.
Okay. Real quick, ladies and gentlemen, the process, the process so far has been very challenging, because we're literally dealing with hundreds of buildings and hundreds of units. We've got a little bit of sort of controlled chaos. Moving forward, like Marty says, we're going to have contractors out there, it's gonna be very scheduled, you'll have advance notice, we'll be posting the living document as it gets updated on a routine basis, alpha-ing all the mailbox nests, we'll have it on the website, we'll do the best we can- We'll do the best we can to give everybody as much advanced notice as possible, because we know this is gonna be much more structured than the emergency services and the ongoing mitigation and tarps and everything else, as well as the inspection, which I know is very frustrating for everyone. But moving forward, it's gonna be much more streamlined. We're only gonna be dealing with probably 20 or 30 buildings at a time,